So I guess in the back room.
Hopefully we're recording.
She hears me and can can make us active at, you know, as of six forty, but. Select Board meeting, July twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one is open and I want to. State that I don't know if we're recording live, but we are recording digitally for future. You know, use, so please know that. We will start with open session. Uh, I don't see anybody here for open session. Anybody email you or anything to say that there's gonna be open session? Nope.
Everybody's on here.
Okay, so minutes would be next. We're gonna defer if there are any.
Can you hear me?
Uh, no, not yet. So, uh, can you hear us?
I can barely hear you. It's very broken up signal.
Okay, I'm I'm not surprised, I guess, but um, yeah, it's it's Hubbardston here, but um.
That's Hubbardston.
Anyway, we're we're just opened the meeting here and we'll we'll grab you in a few minutes if we need you.
We'll go on in and out, obviously.
Yeah, um, so no minutes, so, you know, nothing to apply there. So we have a joint meeting. I'm gonna skip. Uh, uh, Roman numeral four for a second and five, just to get some other items that we can get some updates on. So the next would be community events.
Alright, we got a whole bunch of them. So August fourteenth is the first thing that's coming up. We have a bottle and can drive. For the Girl Scouts, um, Troop One-One-Eight-O-Nine. It will be at the rec field from one to nine, so um, if you have bottles and cans, bring them. Uh, there will be no rain date. It'll be that date and that day only. We work in the rain, doesn't matter. Uh, the next one up after that is August twenty-eighth, the Diggie Dash. Ten AM at Brigham Pond. Um, rain date will be the twenty-ninth. Last year, we did have to do the rain date. Hopefully this year it'll be much better. Um, but we already have a bunch of entries and the flag should be going up sometime this week. Rick has them. Um, so we are looking forward to hopefully another year of a fun-filled event for the Diggie Dash. We did have an article in the Gardener News. For this this past week, so um, we are getting some traction on the Diggie Dash, which is good.
And and you just said a few minutes ago before we went on that the uh, the Lions club?
Yeah, the Lions will be there with their food truck, so um, they will have some food there. I think they're doing like hot dogs and usually. Breakfast sandwiches of some sort, so easy, simple, you know, but they will have food there so you can, you know, help them out with some fundraising by spending some money while you're there. But it's it's bring your camp chair, picnic blanket, whatever, and everybody and some sunscreen, cause you're usually sitting straight out in the sun for a while. And just have a grand old time laughing at people sinking. Uh, the next thing up is the Library Five K on September eleventh. Uh, it starts at nine AM. It's the Twenty-Fourth Annual Five K and the information is on um, the town. Uh, the library's town website and the Facebook page. You can sign up for their Five K. I think if you do it by a certain date, you get a T-shirt.
Yeah, we did. I did, and my two daughters did as well. We're on it again, and that's what exactly what it is. It's a certain date and there's a certain amount of them, like a hundred. Uh, David's gone and a hundred.
Whatever.
A hundred shirts or something like that, but yeah, I don't think anyone's ever not got a shirt.
Yeah, so yeah, so sign up if you wanna run the the Five K, the Library Five K. It's on September eighteenth. Um, on September, excuse me, September eleventh.
That's right.
Yeah, September eighteenth is the next one, which is the following weekend, Field Day. Nine to three at the rec field, uh, put on by the Lions and I helped them fill a field and help them promote it. Uh, the rain date is the nineteenth. They have a bunch of activities going on. Um, I just got some information today. They're gonna have like an obstacle course. For kids and the cow flop and like all their traditional fun activities that they do. So again, that's a grand old time. Lots of town vendors and local surrounding town vendors there. Um, but yeah, it's usually fun. Usually the greens are singing. It's a grand, you know, grand old time. Uh, again, that's September eighteenth, nine to three with a rain date, the nineteenth. The last one that I have going on or that I have coming up in the list is, and it's not mine, it's it's the Lions', but it's definitely worth a mention. It is um, the Haunted Hayride. They are doing it again. It's October twenty-second and twenty-third. Um, there is information if you'd like to do a skit. Or to find out more details, hauntedhubbardston.com. They have a website, so if you are looking to do one of the skits in the hayride. Uh, it is fun. I I do one with the kids and Girl Scouts and whatever, Boy Scouts. It it is a fun evening um, to dress up and be crazy all night long and do dumb things. Uh, the rain dates for those are the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, and it will be at Rieda Ranch in the evenings. So usually it starts around five thirty, six o'clock. But that's what we got coming up. Um, all these fall events going straight in through will be in Johnny Appleseed as well. I did. Touch base with them and everything will be listed in Johnny Appleseed, including the light fight and frozen house sets, so. Yeah, we got good stuff going on.
It's all good. You're over here in the middle. Thanks Chuck.
Right there.
What's your name?
Alright, great.
Alright, thank you Katie. Um, David, can you hear us now?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, yeah, I.
Don't change it.
Yeah, no, I called you via FaceTime audio, cause I'm on Wi-Fi, which I know you don't know what I just said. But that's all good.
Alright.
You laughed. So anyway, okay, so we're we're still in open session, so we've gone through open session and we don't have any minutes. We skipped uh, Roman numerals four and five, which are the joint meeting with the FinCom. And the ARPA discussion, just to get to a few other things. Katie has done the community event update. We're now on Roman numeral seven, which is new business. Um, uh, you know, I don't have any new business anywhere at the table here, or or David, do you have anything for new business?
Nope.
Okay, um, Roman numeral eight is old business. I just wanted to give an update on the center school project. Um, so it's going. Overall, it's going well, um, even with the um, the all the rain that we had. It's tough to do roofs. So it's rain or?
The heat.
Really hot, right? I was at the project meeting last Thursday, uh, which we had in the center school. Three or four people from the district, including uh, Cheryl Duval, Joe Peterson, um, Sheila Muir. I mean, they really take it seriously and all show up, plus a few facilities people. Um, the guy Kevin who's taking over for Claire, who's run facilities forever there at that the in the district. So. Anyway, they're all on board, plus the owner's project manager, the architect, the contractor were there. So the main piece of, um, you know, notable news, which is not good news, but it's not surprising news, is. The metal roof portion of it has been delayed, so. Uh, like many other commodities and cause of, you know, sort of the pandemic excuses. Um, but uh.
How long?
It's so originally their contract was supposed to complete on February, I'm sorry, September twenty-first, and that was gonna. Um, be the full contract complete, and that was gonna be receiving the metal stuff sometime in August. So that they were actually gonna complete that before school went back, which is the first week of September, and then get on to other work, so it wasn't gonna be as disruptive. That's not gonna happen anymore. The group discussed it. It's coming in maybe late August, early September, this metal portion. So they're working it out and um, they're gonna start, um, you know, that metal portion of it during school days, but only at the gym. So that's not gonna be disruptive to classes, but you can't do the metal roof anywhere where there's gonna be classes, cause kids will be like, what's going on? It's like helicopters constantly running out, right? If you had helicopters, would you be able to have school? No, because the kids are gonna be looking at helicopters. So anyway, they're gonna work uh, different hours and and you know, the contractor had did not hem and haw about it. They're gonna work, you know, from three to dark. When they can, uh, you know, when that comes in and Saturdays, so that there. It's not a, um, you know, it's not a huge problem, but it's disruptive without a doubt. It's not their fault. I totally believe them, cause they, we pushed the contract. As quickly as we could to get it signed so that they could get their order in, and they had it going. It was gonna be fine, and again, I lived this on the construction side too. It's just. Somebody calls you one day and says eh, you're not gonna get it in time. There's nothing you can do. You can't change vendors, cause the vendors aren't gonna get it any faster. You just go further in the queue. So, uh, that's the update. Other than that, everything else is going fine. I I asked about change orders, cause again, this matters for the town, change orders and. Uh, there are none except for one little one that has to do with some electrical connection, which is minor. Um, and then there, uh, it's the most of the contract is a lump sum, but there are some unit prices. You can get kinda screwed sometimes if unit prices. Quantities go too high, but none of those have even applied yet, so there's probably gonna even be a small credit to the contract, so. Cost control's fine, oversight is fine, the product is fine. Uh, it's just it's gonna be a little delayed. So, anyway, that's the update to uh, to old business.
I got a question about old business. So what's an update on the antenna? I haven't seen anything going on down there at all.
Um, yeah, I guess David, I don't know. So Jeff just asked if there's an update on um, on the tower, uh, sort of antenna. I know we had some correspondence in the last couple of weeks anyway, from uh, Mike, uh, about Mike Moriarty at the um, the Rowland Regional Dispatch on that. Do you have a? Uh, can you recall where things stand relative to that? I know you forwarded me an email.
Yeah, yes, I uh, I heard from Mr. Moriarty that the RFP for the tower car construction. And the placement of the dispatching equipment has gone out, so that's out the bit at this point. Uh, so we're finally beginning to see some concrete progress. Uh, it's unclear about the cell tower, uh, self-organization of that power. Uh, whether we're going to be doing the RFP for that or it's the it's the district. Um, I'd rather it be the district because uh, uh, they're ultimately going to be in charge of revenues from the cell tower portion.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But we're out, we're out to the bit.
Okay, well, alright, thanks for the update.
Thanks, Dave. People keep asking, where's this tower?
Yeah.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, okay. Alright, well, appreciate that. Uh, the next item is is item nine, which I think, you know, this is the town administrative uh, report portion of it. Um, anything you wanna note here? I I mean, I we can just wait till next time unless there's anything pressing you wanna discuss.
Right, which what is this topic?
This is the town administrative report. I basically just said we're we're planning to wait till the next meeting.
Oh yeah, yeah, that's that's, yeah, let's wait for a little bit.
Yeah, sounds good. Um, and then Roman numeral ten is policies to review. We don't have any. Um, and so that that brings us back to uh, Roman numeral four, which is our our joint meeting with the FinCom. So you don't have a quorum?
No, so that's that.
So that's that. Um, so but are you okay if we carry on with discussion? Um, you know? Alright, so we're we're gonna start with um, the the first item there, which is relative to a vacancy that we have. Um, and I know the answer to this question already, but we're gonna discuss it, cause we're we're in uh, we're in open session, or we're in a a live meeting here, but um. So so the the options, I suppose, for bringing um, applicants to the table is either those uh, that. Have come to you or come to us as the town, and you currently don't have any, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we don't either.
Okay.
So um, David, can you just let us know, um, if you know offhand, uh, how the advertisement or Laurie, how the advertisement for this position? Has gone out, if at all?
So is this one or two?
I don't think it's gone out, and I think it's uh, the decision made by the vote that take that back and has gone out. Um, and I haven't received any expressions of interest.
Alright, well, obviously it's an extremely important position. We're gonna have to think about how best to uh, get the word out better than we have.
They can post online and post on Facebook for volunteers.
Alright, so Laurie's gonna post it online, post it on Facebook. Um, we'll we'll um.
Table that probably until you get applications.
We're gonna have to, so we can't even really throw it up back on the agenda until we actually get some. Some um, some interest. So I guess, you know, whether in this room here or anyone who's watching this, um, if you're interested in the FinCom or know somebody who is. Please um, please have them contact somebody at the town and um, and we'll um. Go from there.
And it's an elected position if anybody's interested, but it's an appointment until the next election, so it's a nice option to try before you, you know, really get stuck into the. Position. I don't wanna say stuck, but if you hate it, you know, you're not, you don't have to continue doing it, so it's a nice trial.
But you won't hate it.
You won't.
You won't, I promise you, you won't hate it.
Well, we all smiled, cause we know what you mean by stuck, so we got it. Um, alright, well, it sounds good, so uh, that that'll be the plan moving forward there. Um, so no action, no motion, none of that uh, for tonight. And then the next item is the um, uh, relative to a discussion on the American Rescue Plan Act, which is uh, ARPA. So the items, I'm just gonna read them that are on our agenda here, and then I'll go through a little bit more, but the items on here are. The review of survey results for ARPA funding in Hubbardston. So what we did was um, um, town town employees and um, uh. Committee members and all that were were given a a survey to give feedback on uh, on what the important slash applicable. Um, items uh, may be in town for us to be able to use these ARPA funds for. Um, uh, the second item on here is review of lost revenue calculation under ARPA, so. Uh, that's a calculation that actually David uh, and others have done on on how the town may have lost revenue, cause we can we can recover funds based on that. The next is a review of administrative charges allowed under ARPA. In a minute, I'm gonna let David talk about that briefly, on on what that means and and what um. We've been able to put together on it. And the next is uh, the the formation of an ARPA committee to coordinate the town's spending priorities. So this is something that's been done in other communities, um, because there's so much money and it's important to get um, those who who have their finger on the pulse of. What the town needs and can make things happen, I guess, the two best best ways to put it, uh, for that. So. Um, in front of us, so all the the FinCom and select board members and Laurie, uh, we have. Uh, some of the items that I just described there, the first page being the the survey results. Uh, that has information on it, and then there's some some calculation sheets showing um, you know, some other uh, some other. Items that are on this list rel- relative to lost revenue calculations and administrative charges. So David, with that setup that I just gave, which I don't know how good that was, but with that setup I just gave, can you can you give us a a brief overview of of what you've done so far? And and maybe where we stand uh, on this?
Certainly, uh, the first thing is that we've got our first quarter of a million dollars payment to the town already, sitting in the bank account getting interest. So we can start spending this money now. The question is, what what do we wanna spend it on? Uh, and it's very clear by reading the uh, the guidelines from the US Treasury that we should be doing some sort of needs assessment. So that the spending that we uh, authorize has a direct connection to the. Language and the intent of the ARPA uh, document. So taking that ARPA document, I just listed out the categories of needs that the the US government. But might apply in small towns and put that together into a survey, which asks for both quantitative and qualitative response. So we have a tabulation of what are the most pressing perceived needs of the town of Hubbardston. And two of them emerged, one of which is economic support for small businesses. And the other one is to build infrastructure, water, sewers, cell and internet. Um, then there are other other um, results that showed interest, just flipping over to this page. Um, lost revenues, especially for small businesses, uh, mental health issues of people being quarantined entirely too long. Food insecurity, uh, lack of elder care, lack of childcare. Uh, skills training for the unemployed, uh, the increased cost of public uh, safety. And a list of other uh, uh, suggestions, which are in the qualitative portion of the uh, of the survey results. So I I think it would be very easy for the town to decide that that the uh. Support for small businesses and the building of infrastructure are high priorities for uh, the use of the ARPA funds.
And infrastructure, David, uh, infrastructure means means what? Um, does it mean um, infrastructure? Uh, that is specifically tied to what is able to be um, uh, this money is able to be used for? Or is infrastructure a wide open um, term that can be used for whatever we want?
Yeah, they're they're specific about what infrastructure means. It's water, sewer or um, broadband.
Yep.
So those are the three infrastructure kind of projects. Somebody suggested doing a water system for the public safety complex, a new one whenever it's built. Um, I'm not sure that we have the time under ARPA to uh, utilize that money for that purpose.
And what is the time again?
You got two years.
And the allocation of funds, uh, we got a quarter of a million dollars that was given to us now. The schedule for allocation of funds to the town, such as this first payment of two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah, we just just got the first payment. We're gonna get one point four million dollars.
But but the, how does it come? Quarterly or how does it come to us? Do you know?
Uh, we get um, the allocation for the this town is about five hundred and five thousand dollars. That'll come in two chunks. First chunk has been uh, uh, received. That's a quarter of a million dollars. We have that already. The second chunk will come twelve months from now. The the um, the al- the remaining out reallocation of nine hundred thousand dollars is for what would have gone to the county. And that's being handled separately by the state, and that'll come in two chunks of about four hundred thousand dollars each, but I don't know when the first chunk is going to happen.
Okay, so I mean. So.
So you can you can spend up to one point four million dollars, cause you know you're gonna get it. You can use a grant on anticipation note in order to expend more. Than we have cash on hand.
Do do we have to get town needing vote for any of this?
No. You already have that through the uh, uh, the language of the motion of the omnibus budget.
Yeah, okay, alright. I I mean, some of these questions, I I didn't know that one, but some of them we know, but we just wanna make sure we're on the same page here, so. Okay, so alright, so that was um, that was an explanation. Does everyone understand then that the total funds and the allocation? Okay, so that was, thank you for that. The next item, I guess, is. Just moving on there is is you've done a a lost revenue calculation, which we have a sheet here. That shows uh, lost revenue and then for the first year, the town of Hubbardston may claim forty-three thousand and change in lost revenues. And then it's a similar claims may be made for for three years. So can you just explain the lost revenue sheet a little bit?
Right, so if you um, if you didn't have a pandemic, uh, FY twenty uh, and twenty-one would have been the the normal. Uh, but um, you'd see the normal amount of uh, of local receipts coming in. This lost revenue does not include, yeah, let me start it over. Lost revenue includes local receipts. It does not include state aid. It does not include taxation, and it doesn't include uh, grants. So whatever we got for alcohol licenses or or motor vehicle excise or any other uh, costs that we uh, were. Any other revenue that we are gonna gather as a town of Hubbardston, um, that's what they consider to be revenue, and lost revenue would be any. Any revenue projection that did not meet a four percent increase from the base year, which is FY twenty nineteen. So they they've done a calculation that shows what tw- twenty twenty would have looked like at four percent and above uh, what twenty uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, uh, actually was, and if we were under that projected four percent increase, then that delta. Is the lost revenue, which they assume you would have used for any lawful purpose. Except for investments or paying off of uh, unconfended liabilities. So that's money that's available to the town to use for any lawful purpose. Uh, and I did a quick calculation, uh, um, which needs to be verified, but it looks like forty-three thousand dollars per year. For the next three years, we could collect them as lost revenue.
So out of the one point four million that we're gonna be getting over two years, forty-three thousand times three? Is money that is uh, I'm not saying automatically, but it feels like we're just gonna be. Uh, using this as a a verifiable um, way to be compensated for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of the one point four million? Did I hear that right?
Right, right.
Okay, um, okay, any other questions about this?
Based upon my under- based upon my understanding of Hubbardston is that we had a shortfall in. Our uh, our capital cost because of the school elevator. We needed to fit another fifty thousand dollars into the capital program. Uh, if you had that forty-three thousand dollars, you wouldn't have had to make quite as many uh, hard choices for your capital funding. Then you did, so you could use it for capital.
And do we, in successive years, do we have to continue to um, prove this, or do we automatically get it?
Um, you actually get it.
Alright, I won't ask any more questions. Alright, um, the, anything else on on lost revenue or or have we covered that one?
Well, uh, is this a give a given that we are going to take, we're gonna spend that forty-three thousand?
Nope, I wanna go through all the items and then we'll go back. So Susan, I don't know if you heard that, Susan was asking, like, have we just made a decision? And we have not, so no decisions. We're just gonna go through everything, so we make sure we understand it, and then we'll we'll come back and discuss these things as necessary, so. So we're gonna move on, um, David, to the the administrative charges. Similar to how you just did with the lost revenue, could you give us a uh, a brief description of the administrative charges, calculations?
Okay, so you're gonna engage in a number of major projects and spend one point four million dollars. Um, that's gonna take staff time. That's going to cost you overhead. Uh, those charges are eligible for ARPA funding. So I put together a calculation of what it would, what would be a reasonable expectation of your costs. That are diverted from other municipal purposes to specifically managing an ARPA project at about a million dollars to uh, one point four million dollars. And there are three categories of costs that we should be thinking about. The first is for those financial uh, uh, professionals. Who are going to be actually managing the money, writing the checks, uh, uh, reviewing invoices. Uh, doing the bidding and all that kinda stuff. You've gotta pay their salaries. And there's a set of a series of calculations for the treasurer clerk, uh, the town administrator, the assistant treasurer, the economic director. Uh, and the accountant, uh, and those salaries uh, come up to a percentage of your total budget. And if you do the math, total budget, total cost of the town is about thirty thousand dollars of salaries. In addition to the salary, there's the benefits that you would be paying as well, and that that allocation is about eight, uh, eight thousand dollars. And then finally, there's the physical plant, physical plants costs that go along that with uh, having these people work on ARPA projects. So the cost for heating and cooling, cost for electricity, cost for IT, cost for insurance, for legal, et cetera. And that comes up to twenty-eight, nine thousand dollars. And you add those together, you come up with, you know, sixty-eight thousand dollars that you can claim for FY twenty-two expenses.
Alright, understood, so that. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
Uh, no, yep, so.
You could you could transfer, so you could transfer sixty-eight thousand dollars from ARPA into the FY twenty-two budget. And have that roll over to your cash in the future.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure, I understood exactly what you said there. So in that calculation, uh, which which doesn't come in, that's an annual calculation that was done. Based on um, uh, you know, one year of what our town hall building maintenance service salaries would be, our benefits and town halls some support expenses. And that was done to the total of one point four and change on the ARPA funds. Um, that's okay, because if we were gonna do it over two years, we would have to cut the ARPA funds in half, which would be the same calculation, seven hundred thousand and change, twice, right? So um, that's all you've done is just, you've done it over one year, cause it's an easier calculation, right?
So I guess it's uh, first of all, that there's there's the methodology to this, and I just took the whole numbers out of the air. Uh, that these are using calculations which can be verified, the data can be verified. Uh, and it acknowledges that there's a cost to this opportunity. Um, whether we want to uh, divert ARPA money away from projects to administrative costs is a policy decision.
Okay.
Right.
Yep, understood. Uh, okay, I I I, anyone have any questions on on that portion of it? No? Um, okay. Alright, so so I probably just one more thing that we've got for you here, David, before you can, you know, go go have the fun that you should be having. Is, can you tell us a little bit about um, this, the the makeup or the recommendations for the ARPA committee? Um, so so I I think I remember talking to you about some other towns have have done this sort of thing, or it was a recommendation by whomever. Um, you know, printed this money to uh, to be able to put this sort of a committee together. Do you have any? um, you know, printed this money to, uh, to be able to put this sort of a committee together, do you have any, uh, thoughts or, or recommendations that you can share with us?
Sure, there's, um, in small towns in particular, where there isn't a whole lot of district, there was a planners and the HR and, uh, and engineers and so forth. Uh, the Select Board plans, it burdens them to, uh, manage the ARPA at the level of detail that it really needs to be managed. Uh, um, so they've gone to the, uh, step of putting together a small ad hoc committee that's in charge of, of, um, doing the detailed work with, uh, setting up ARPA projects and then managing them. Uh, there are two kinds of committees that seem to be emerging, there's one, which is a gatekeeping committee, very much like CPA, where they, uh, they are in charge of approving or disproving, um, uh, projects that are eligible for ARPA. Uh, I'm not sure that I like that idea, but I just wanna make sure that you understand that that is an option. And then the other flavor of committee would be particularly hands-on managing, uh, committee, uh, doing some of the background research to, if we're going to improve our broadband capacity in the town, what does that look like? Does that look like extending cable service for the extra mile, uh, to reach all residences, even if they're halfway uh, uh, up a slope and, uh, the cable company won't, uh, connect them? Or do, do we, uh, contact the, uh, the, the broadband provider and find out what their cost would be for increasing the bandwidth, uh, for the town of Hubs, Hubbardston, and then using the ARPA money to make that, uh, bridge?
Alright, I, I, I understand, so, so this ad hoc committee, which, which I think for, in our case, would be committee number option two there, cause option one, you, you said, uh, in some of the description of them, would, uh, would be a committee that was telling us stuff we can't do, we don't want that kinda committee. So, um, i- is, as far as, you know, who that committee reports to and who makes the ultimate call, is that, uh, jointly, like, in the room we're in here, between the, the FinCom and, and the Board of Selecting, or, or, you know, how, how would you think, um, you know, uh, the recommendations of that committee are, are the, you know, whenever that is, are eventually handled?
Yeah, so I think that, um, you know, it's very clear in the legislation that, uh, the Select Board is in charge of the monies. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I don't wanna relinquish that, uh, their command and control to a committee. Um, and, uh, and particularly if we've timed it so, yes, it's gonna start to pull this off in a two or three year period, uh, we wanna make sure that we're, we're as quickly as possible, uh, but as focused as possible. Uh, so my recommendation is that it's form a committee with finance committee and Select Board, uh, representation, community representation, and anybody else who you think would be a valuable asset to a committee like that.
What was the third one you said, we heard FinCom and we heard Select Board, and what is?
Community, community member.
Committee member?
Somebody from the community.
Community, okay, I get it, alright, so, so, we're talking numbers here, so, like, a, a five member, uh, five member committee? Does that sound, um?
Three or five, yeah.
Three, yeah, three's probably not enough, um, so, so maybe a five member committee, um, t- two FinCom, two Select Board, and one member of the community, no?
I don't think so, no.
That, that sounds good.
What do you think?
Really? I wouldn't think two, I wouldn't think two and two. Maybe, sh- should we have somebody from planning do it?
I was gonna say, would you, what about that?
Uh, yeah, two, two, one, 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 check.
I mean, I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Like, two community, one FinCom, one planning board.
One Fin, yeah, right.
How about this, David, so there, there's some discussion at the table and, and, um, to make sure that we've got, you know, adequate, you know, representation for, um, you know, all the, all the interested parties, I guess, or all the people who, who know the town most, um, maybe two community members plus one planning board, plus one FinCom, plus one Board of Select Board, uh, member, to make five? Um, that, how's that sound to you?
I thought it was, I thought it was two on the, two boards.
Alright, so that's two plan, uh, two, one FinCom, one board member, one, like, community member?
One, one, one.
Why do I? Do we, no, one.
What, we don't want, we don't want seven on the.
No, no, I said, I thought that we, we meant two Select Board members and one for each.
Cause you guys need the final decision.
Planning, finance, and one.
Yeah, that sounds, yeah, that sounds, that sounds okay.
That's, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that sounds.
Alright, so I'm gonna revise that again, so, um, yeah, that's what we do, right, we get there eventually, so. Uh, uh, further discussion on the table, we're, we're thinking, uh, as a group here, that maybe two Select Board members, one finance committee member, one planning board member, and one community, um, uh, representative, make five. So, um, I, I think that's what we're settling on here.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, we can write it down.
You don't have to write anything down, we have it.
We have it.
Alright, fine.
And, and I think, uh, you know, um, if that's something we're comfortable with, we have a quorum here and a, and a, and a meeting with the Select Board, that, um, if, if we're gonna, uh, develop a committee and then, um, the, uh, how it's constructed, uh, we can do that when we have everyone in the room.
Perfect timing.
Oops.
Whoop, whoop.
Maybe what we'll do for FinCom is that we'll pick somebody and we'll have an alternate, don't you think that's a good idea?
Yeah, so at least somebody can always show.
Yeah, and maybe I'll be the committee member and you could be the alternate, cause we seem to be the most rel- we seem to be the most reliable ones there, I said it out loud.
Alright, um, so David, so we're good, um, uh, with you, we're gonna, we're gonna, what's that?
Start, yeah, then we can start advertising.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna, uh, take some action, uh, after we get off the phone with you on this item, uh, the, which, which we'll fill you in when you come back, uh, do you have anything else you wanna add, uh, to the meeting here?
Uh, no, I think that, uh, I think that, um, we've covered all bases so far.
Alright, well, thank you very much for taking some time out from Sacramento, and, um, you know, enjoy, uh, enjoy the rest of your vacation, we'll talk to you when you get back.
Thank you very much, I'll, I'll give you a text when I get back to the valley.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
Alright, we got there, alright, we'll wait till Jeff come back here and then we can entertain a motion to, uh, memorialize this. So while, while we're talking, um, uh, you know, it seems like we should be able to get there for a lot of these, um, as far as people in a room discussing different options to be able to spend the money. Just, I don't know how else to put it.
Yeah, I'm just anxious about nickeling and diming it away, some of this other stuff, I'm highly anxious about that.
Oh. I hear ya. Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, cause this is one shot, so you got one shot to do something that we will know, yeah, we're not, it's like, just a present, like, here you go.
That's right, I wanted to. Yeah.
So we need to do something very productive with it, we can't be screwing around.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna fight about who to name it after, I don't wanna fight about the rest of this stuff.
I hear ya, but I do like the idea of these first two calculations, hey Jeff, I like the idea of the first two calculations that were done, um.
Yeah, I know.
Just because it does, it's, it's, you know, it's things that we're always cutting at town hall, right, so always things we're cutting, so if we can
I know.
plug that hole for a year or two and then go to what you're talking about there and, and make something real, um, you know, that, that I don't think is nickeling, I mean, that's just, um, spreading it out a little bit, so anyway, alright, well, we've
Yeah.
We've just discussed this and, and it sounds like we wanna, uh, we wanna, uh, make a committee.
So we need a motion, to make, you wanna make a motion, or?
Yes.
Oh, to establish the committee, or to?
Yes, to establish and its makeup, yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, we, as a board, form the, uh, ARPA committee.
Um, and its makeup is gonna be?
And it's makeup of two Select Board members, one Finance Committee member, one Planning Board, and one member from the community.
I will second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, we, uh, we'll vote, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, it's unanimous, um, so we'll, we'll put it on our agenda to, to select, um, uh, who's gonna be, who the members are gonna be, you guys can do the same.
Mm-hmm.
We'll reach out to the, the Planning Board and, and, um, let them know that they're gonna be a part of this as well, and then, um, we'll also, um, bef- let's, let's put it on our next agenda to, to.
Well, you're gonna appoint, right, you're gonna appoint members of the committee?
We are gonna, but we're gonna take recommendations.
Right, 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 okay, okay.
And then appoint, so we'll do that at our own, cause we're at our own, and then we'll receive.
Alright, so then we're, we're gonna have to get it together then and have a, have a meeting to, to do that, alright.
Yeah.
It might be wise if we could, on the, uh, member of the community, since a lot of this money, and David pointed out, we want it to go to help the small businesses, that perhaps we get someone who is
Small business, no.
has a small business and can, can discuss from how they've been impacted, et cetera. That's just a thought.
We, we, and we do have a number of people who, I have a bunch of emails here and other things that were sent in along with the survey that have some ideas, so.
Oh, good, okay, great.
Yeah, so I think there's some people we, you know, uh, we can, we can
Yeah, or.
We're, I think we're gonna find somebody pretty easily for that, but we'll, we'll put it on our agenda to be able to, you know, formally advertise it or offer, you know, that, that it's out there, and then, you know, we'll, we'll see where it goes from there.
Right. Yeah. Alright, okay.
But it's a person who is not in any elected position at this.
I think we're, we're gonna reserve, um, I'm gonna reserve the right to, to not answer that yet, um, simply because it could be some obscure, you know, I, I just don't wanna say, if there's somebody who's on the Agricultural Commission, who
Right, right.
or whatever, I'm, you know, I don't mean that one, but you know, anything that, that fits, you know, hey, I'm a ARPA committee expert that we don't know about, right, you know, it's just, might as well just hold off on answering that right off the bat, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, alright, um, okay, so that action's done.
Okay, great.
Um, uh, next item is item, uh, eleven, matters not reasonably by the chair, I don't have any, you guys have anything?
Nope.
Anything from the FinCom wanna add to here?
No.
Public press questions, nobody's chimed in?
No.
Throughout the course of this meeting, that you know of?
No, I haven't.
Move to adjourn.
Sounds good?
Uh, second.
Seconded, not debatable, um, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, and we adjourn, alright.